Good evening and welcome to the January 7th, 2021 Special Board of Education Meeting. Tonight, we're going to be discussing our options to open both of our high schools back up for in-person learning. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our Superintendent, Dr. Matthew Lutz.
Well, good evening. Here we are again to discuss the return to schools as we have had multiple discussions since March 13th, when we, the Governor originally shut down our schools across the state. Guidance has changed throughout, so I'm going to go over updates today regarding things that have changed and also share information with our board so we can make a decision regarding the return of our high school students and move on from there. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and begin the presentation. All right.
And Ms. Kraft and Ms. Rose are with us by Zoom, so they're actually in the meeting with us, but they're just, there they are. Oh, Dwan's in the Bahamas.
Hello?
Hello?
That certainly sounds wonderful.
I'm sorry, Dr. Lutz.
No problem. No problem whatsoever. We also have our student board member with us today, and we're happy to have you as we were able to have in our room. Glad to see you here, Olivia. All right, our current reality. So to review, our guidance still only permits middle schools and high schools to operate under Plan B, a hybrid model, or Plan C, a 100% virtual model. Parents of students in grades pre-K-12 still have the option to elect for their students to remain virtual regardless of the district's plan for in-person instruction. So students are not required to return to in-person instruction, and that choice has been made, and we'll look at those numbers for the pre-K-5 group and also in middle school. So again, just to reiterate, we are required to offer in-school and a virtual if we choose in-school. Elementary schools have been operating under Plan A since October 26th. A virtual academy was created to serve pre-K families who elected for students to stay virtual. That represents about 20% of our population in elementary. Middle schools began operating under Plan B on November 16th. Staff navigate both in-person and virtual students synchronously. We do not have a separate academy. We do this in two cohorts, a cohort A and a cohort B, and our students teach, our teachers teach our students at the same time whether they're in the classroom or they are at home. High schools completed the first semester 100% virtually. High schools did bring in small groups of students for direct instructional support. High school exams were administered in-person the week of December 14th to the 18th at both high schools. The state required that the exams take place in-person, and I will update you regarding our attendance at that time. So participation during the fall exam window was higher than expected. I know there was a lot of discussion here with this board and also within the high school staffs regarding whether or not our students would attend. I can say that over 80% of our students did attend and take their graduation, I'm sorry, take their end-of-course exams. If they did not, they have until June of 2021 to take those tests. But again, in almost all subjects, our participation rate was higher than expected, so we were very pleased with that turnout. In fact, I must say that I don't know that I have ever seen kids so excited to take a test when they came in for finals with smiles on their faces. I know that they were excited to step back in the building. The slide that we're looking at now, and again, for our public, this will be posted on our website after our meeting so that you can take a look at it as well. I'm going to, as you look at the numbers that are up there, I want to make a note at the bottom of the page. It says, "It's important to note that only school-affected positive cases are reported in our press releases and on our COVID dashboard, which is updated every Friday." For example, if a student tested positive but is in the virtual academy, they are counted in our tracking but not on our COVID dashboard. So we don't want to imply that we're sharing mixed numbers. So we all, any time that we have something in-person, we have someone in a building, we are making that report immediately out, but we are tracking everything that we have. It says central office as five, that includes maintenance, that includes finance, that includes all support staff from October 23rd to the December 18th. So these are where our current numbers are, and wanted to share those with you. Now, in addition to the positive cases, you also have quarantines that occur as well. We do track those quarantines, but we don't report the number of quarantines. What we have found out is that when our staffs, when our employees practice the protocols that are in place, the six feet distancing, the masks, and so on, we do not have to quarantine very many people. It generally would affect just that staff member or perhaps their family. And so by following those guidelines, we're able to keep our schools open and keep our students in-person and keep our staffs healthy as well. So what we learned quickly early on with the first couple of cases is we had to quarantine a number of adults because we did not follow the guidelines, and I think nobody liked the way that felt, and I think people would want to come, they want to be around their kids, they want to be in-person, and so on. So they've done, our staff has done a wonderful job of following those protocols once we had a few early-on lessons learned. Our virtual learning registration for spring of 2021, and I'm going to reiterate here that a student can leave the in-person instruction and move to virtual learning, and we had that occur a number of times. You can't go from virtual to in-person, but you can go from in-school to virtual learning. These numbers have been fairly steady. We've done a rerostering, and we will have our virtual learning academy open for the remainder of the school year. You can see the numbers in the K-5 world. That represents again about 20% of the population. Currently, we have 19 teachers dedicated to the virtual academy to support our student learning. State requirements require us to stay within the guidelines in terms of class-size numbers with K-3 in the virtual learning arena as well as in-person. The middle schools, you can see those numbers as well. They represent a, they're a little more inaccurate almost because students, they're a little bit more fluid from the way the instruction is delivered, and the high school numbers are preliminary at this point in time. We know that those may change, but again, by the way we're delivering our instruction, which is synchronous at the same time, it does allow for our students a little bit There are two options that I'd like our board to consider moving forward. Did not want to, again, as we prepared for our meeting tonight, we were reminded that the purpose of our meeting is to discuss the return of high school. And so to simplify things, we're going to put forth two options, and then when we complete this presentation, we'll have a discussion, and our board can make a decision as to what direction they would like us to go. Option one is to continue with the current status, which is 912 remaining 100% virtual, bringing in small groups for support. Option two is bringing 912 back under Plan B, with the start date for high schools would be January 25th. That would be our target date for the high schools. We believe that would give us enough time to prepare, to move our kids back into arena, and would also allow for a soft start and allow us to work through some concerns, issues, and logistics that are always a challenge, and we'll get to those here in a few minutes. There has been some concerned discussion that we are not having a public comment at tonight's meeting. When you have a special meeting designed like this, this is really more along the lines of a work session where you may or may not, where you do not have comment. We have had this occur a number of times. You can see July 22nd, July 27th, the 6th, the 10th, the 21st of September. I just wanted to point out that a lot of discussion has occurred around this. Most of this discussion early on sent, first it was across the K-12, and then we looked at bringing elementary back along with middle school, and now we're taking a look at the high school. And so again, quite the challenge for our board to tackle, and for all boards of education across the state and for our staffs during this time period. Since we began having these meetings back all the way through July, transportation has always been a challenge, and a shout-out to our transportation department as they have done yeoman's work at providing us quality information to allow us to make decisions that I can sit with you today to share with you, that we do believe we can get our students to school despite the guidelines under Plan B, which require only one student per seat unless it's a family member, which really limits your busing to 24 with family members above that. That's quite the challenge. Routes have been created to include high school students who registered for a bus. Routes are being driven to ensure accuracy and improve efficiency. The health screenings and temperature screens are required prior to loading the bus, the same as that currently go on. So again, we have a lot of practice in this area already. Hand sanitizer dispensers have been installed on each bus. Safety preparedness kits have been made and will be on each bus. Again, the density on buses will be reduced. This is that challenge that was, we felt we may not be able to overcome, which is Plan B, no more than 24 students permitted per bus and one student per seat unless they're in the same household. Students must sit in assigned seats and wear their cloth face coverings. What we have discovered well regarding those cloth face coverings, students again are happy to be back in the building and more than willing to wear those cloth face covering. I never thought I would see the day that basketball players would be wearing masks and volleyball players, but again, these are the sacrifices that our kids are making so that they can have active participation. School transportation, again, I want to highlight, this is a challenge, and I'm going to touch on that one more time. School nutrition, the USDA extended waiver has allowed our schools, I want to bounce that ahead. The USDA has extended the waiver to allow schools to continue serving meals at no cost to any child between the ages of 1 through 18 through the end of the school year. I strongly encourage our community to take advantage of this opportunity. This is a free breakfast, a free lunch. All students face-to-face and virtual are eligible to receive a breakfast and lunch at no cost each day. Virtual families are encouraged to visit the school nutrition webpage for online ordering and site locations for pickup. We want to get our students fed in our community, and there are plenty of opportunities to do that. Unfortunately, at this time, Kuratack County Schools will continue to suspend the use of our facilities for indoor community use. I thought it was important to come back to this point once again. This is following state guidelines so that if we do choose to open up our high schools, those high schools will not be open for our community at this time. Athletics, volleyball started along with cross-country in November, and things have been moving along. We've had a couple of cases with athletes, test positive for COVID. Todd Parker has done a great job along with our middle schools to ensure that we're following our COVID guidelines. The traditional sports calendar has been moved around to accommodate the impacts of COVID-19. For example, where basketball started last night, but football is going to start after basketball. As we all know, that is not in the tradition of American sports. Normally, it's football then basketball. Sports are compacted and seasons are in a different order. Attendance at events is capped. What that means is that we are not able to, it's limited to one or two tickets per family, per household, and so we have to be very judicious in who is able to attend and who is not. The eligibility requirements have remained the same, and live streaming is available for a fee for high school athletics. So in the midst of this pandemic and not being able to have all parents attend or grandparents and so on and so forth, we have been able to contract and have a live cam inside the gymnasiums, and we'll have them at the football field as well, so that you can actually pay, and it's only $11 a month, which we do actually receive a small fee back from the company as that allows people in our community, but also grandparents that can be in another state, aunts and uncles and so on and so forth, to watch athletics. So in the midst of all this, that's kind of a nice byproduct of this entire pandemic that people that are maybe 100 miles away get to see their grandchildren or nieces or cousins play and so on and so forth. The school calendar, all academic calendars will be revised and updated on the webpage once we, as a Board of Education, reach a decision about high school students returning to in-person instruction. I'd like to take a moment to thank our public again for being patient in this board as we constantly are revising and reviewing and taking a look at what's best for our community, best for our schools, and so on and so forth. An example is this week where we did not return to live in-person instruction at the elementary and middle school level, and we appreciate everybody's patience as we continue to make changes as needed. I wanted to go through a few reminders about our safety protocols. Temperature screenings and health screenings are required prior to loading the bus or entering the school building. Cloth face coverings are required to be worn by everyone in the building at all times unless eating or drinking. Six feet social distancing markings will be found throughout the building as reminders for staff and students. And I wanted to stop and just take a moment there. Our students, what we found at both the elementary and middle school level have done a great job of adapting because when they're out in public, this is the norm right now. If you're in a building, it's, you see marks, you don't wait in the grocery line on top of each other like we used to. There's the distancing in between and anyplace you go. So again, it's not a new behavior, it's more, we've begun to modify our behaviors, and I just want to point that out. Visitors to the building will be limited. Parent drop-off and pickup procedures will be impacted. We did see that with the high schools during exam. That first day or two was quite challenging, and we've made the necessary changes and improvements afterwards. We had the same problem in our elementary schools. Early on, it was taking upwards of an hour for the drop-offs and pick-offs and pickups. That was a baseball slip-up there. I apologize. Thank you, Justin. And so we have to just be patient with those if we go back. And so we'll communicate procedures with families prior to returning to school. High school is particularly challenging with both student drivers, buses, and parent pickup. I wanted to include this slide again for how we handle suspected presumptive or confirmed positive COVID-19 cases. I cannot thank the efforts enough of our nurses along with Ms. Virginia Arrington in terms of how we follow a strict procedures and protocols on each and every case. We are, we take great pride in the fact that we are not reinventing things every single time. We follow the protocols, we work with our health department, and we follow those guidelines. If we find something that was a bit inconsistent, we make sure that we inquire and make sure that we continue to use the same protocols each and every time and are aware of any changes that may occur. On every Friday, Mrs. Renee Doughty along with Mrs. Arrington, they update our COVID-19 dashboard so that we are being completely upfront with our public and making sure that we are sharing exactly what is going on in our schools and when we have a case and so on and so forth. Vaccination, for everyone in this county was aware that we had an opportunity to be vaccinated in Maple Park. If you were by there, the lines were extensive. We were able to have 155 staff members vaccinated before the vaccine, before the vaccine ran out, I think about 12:30, 12:45 today. We are working with our health department to bring the vaccination cruised into our school buildings for our staffs, and Ms. Arrington is working on that. I wanted to point that, so vaccinated individuals are still required to follow all safety protocols, including wearing a cloth face covering. So even though if you have the vaccination, you still are required to follow all the same Other considerations, and these are things that I had an opportunity to meet with the leadership team at Kuratack County High School and also with our administrative team at JP Knapp this morning. One of the concerns that has come up from throughout this pandemic is the number of substitutes that are required if there is a quarantine or if an individual tests positive. That continues to be a challenge. So far, we have been able to meet those challenges. I would encourage anyone that would like to substitute in our buildings to please reach out to our Human Resources Department as we would be happy to have substitutes. But this is a challenge. Many of our substitutes are retired and did not want to come in the building as they were concerned regarding their health and so on and so forth. Hopefully, many received the vaccinations and will be able to have more substitutes. Bus drivers are a challenge in terms of number of drivers even when things are under normal circumstances. And so when, we continue to need bus drivers. I know there are signs up throughout the county. These are just concerns that could impede bringing our kids to school, providing an in-person education. But right now, while it is, while we do not have a number of substitute drivers that we can instantly fill routes, we might have to run double runs. Our transportation department under Mr. Walls has done a nice job identifying that we are able at this point in time to have enough drivers and buses to get our students to school. The quarantining issues, the list is kind of bringing us back to when our staff and our community follow our safety protocols both in and out of school, students, staff, and our community, things run much smoother. So when we are not having large group gatherings, we are doing what we are being asked to do. We're able to provide an in-person instruction or to provide some sense of a return to normalcy as much as possible. But when we don't follow those guidelines, we run into quarantining issues where we have to have a large numbers of students or a significant number of staff go under quarantine because they have been exposed. I just wanted to point that out, that those are issues and concerns that what we have seen is when we follow them, we're able to keep people healthy and safe. Emergency leave has been extended through March 31st at the discretion of each LEA. Kuratack County Schools has elected to continue to offer the emergency leave, which allows when there's a quarantine takes place or a positive COVID test and so on, that there's a certain amount of leave extended to our employees. I think that it's very, I wanted to point that out, that we appreciate that the board continues to support us and our finance officer and within our county that we want to keep our employees safe. By extending this leave, it allows people to continue to get paid and at the same time keep the rest of our students and staff safe. So this is a great opportunity to point that out. Everyone must please stay aware that at any point in time, there may be a need to adjust learning options. We just had that, where we adjusted this week. Our school system continues to monitor the COVID-19 data and the data surrounding each of these special considerations listed above. So there, it is truly a continuous process where we are monitoring where we're at with our substitutes, where we're at with our drivers, where we're at with our quarantines, and we make our decisions based on what that information tells us. At the beginning of this week, we sat down and went through each individual school building and said, "How many people were positive coming out of the holidays? How many staff members do we have quarantined?" So on and so forth. We walked through each of those buildings, each of those scenarios. We looked at the dates when people could return, and we felt that we can return on Monday, January 11th, for our elementary and middle school with a couple of teachers still being in quarantine or having tested positive, but it did not look much different than it may have looked before Thanksgiving or two weeks after. And so we're able to look at this, we, it is constantly monitoring, and if anything changes, I immediately contact our board, and we begin discussions about what we may need to do. At this point in time, I'm going to open up the floor to questions and discussions regarding the two options that I put forth to our board.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, Dr. Lutz. If we come back under Plan B for the high school, will the virtual and the in-person learning be, you know, synchronously?
It will be synchronous, yes.
Okay. Next question, will the school year be extended?
We will, right now, there is no plan to extend the school calendar.
Okay. Next question, would the high school leadership team that you met with say, the high school leadership team that you met with?
Yes, sir.
What did they say?
There was, they had a lot of very good questions, many of which were logistical, and there certainly is a lot of anxiety and concern, and rightfully so. I mean, that's where we're at in these times. Some of those concerns were very similar to what we heard with elementary, along with our middle school staff as well, and many of them are logistical. And so when it comes to the logistical piece, for example, if we're going to change classes, Ms. Scholler and her team will put together a schedule so that we're not going to release all students at one time. I think it's important too, Dr. Dobney, to point out that under Plan B, projected right now under Cohort A, around 400 students under A and about 400 under B would return. So it's half of your population would be in the building, and we are required under B to practice the protocols, which require six feet distancing both in-classroom and out, along with wearing masks. Like our intention in food service, for example, would be to bring food on carts so that we minimize the amount of interchange.
And my last question for right now, Olivia, what do you think? What are your thoughts on this?
So for me personally, virtual learning's been really good for me. My grades are improved because I have more time at home to study, and I think one thing to consider is like, when you don't have in-person, bullying is not a thing. So for me personally, I had to deal with that for high school, like a lot, and it didn't get addressed, so now I don't have to deal with that. So that's one thing that I really like about virtual.
Yeah, but you'd still have that option under Plan B.
Yes, you would.
Will you, will you stay virtual?
Yeah.
You will. Okay.
Dr. Lutz, Dwan speaking. I, first of all, want to thank you for all your hard work that you've put in on this. Very obvious that you've been spending some time with it. Can you tell me about the schools that are around us? Camden, Perquimmons, did they start back? What, you know, what is their, what's going on with them?
So Camden went back to school on Monday. Their high school returned before Thanksgiving. So Camden's high school's back in place. Perquimmons is in, they are also back in high school. They've been back since August, Perquimmons has. Edenton is in the same position as well. Pitt County returned, their high schools, and they've been operating under Plan B as well. Other districts have continued to go with the online model to different degrees. We've operated again under A, B, and C, and several of our districts, Dare has moved under C completely. Terrell County just came back under B, and Elizabeth City has operated under A, B, and C, I believe. And multiple Special Boards of Education meetings have been held this week on this topic about returning students to school and/or high schools or elementaries and so on and so forth. And Pitt County met yesterday and decided to start back up, as did Camden.
Okay. Can you address what the difference is basically between us starting the high school back up and us having the middle school back in school? I mean, you know, we've got those teachers in school. Can you, can you kind of?
You mean the date-wise between starting middle school on the 11th and the high school?
Not necessarily the date, but you know, we've, with the elementary, we're able to keep them in a bubble, you know, we're protecting, you know, but that's not the case with middle school, and it's not the case with the high school, of course. So what, what kind of differences? I mean, you know, obviously, our middle schools have done fairly well with this, so why would we not want to do the high school?
If I recall, so my biggest concern, even all the way back into August, was getting a full understanding around our, around transportation with the limitation of getting students to school.
Right.
And also the practicality of ensuring that we could wear masks, keep our six feet social distancing within the classrooms, and so on. Mayock Middle School provided a pretty good model for us in terms of.
Middle school.
Mayock Middle School.
Middle school students. Middle school students, how many times do they change classes?
At Mariah, they have a six-bell day, so they can change five times. At Currituck Middle, I believe it's a seven-bell day, so they would change six times.
And high school?
Maximum of four-bell day, and that would be three changes.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else having questions?
Dr. Lutz?
Yep.
Yes, Ms. Rose?
Janet Rose, I am, I'm happy to hear that we had a lot of staff members go and get vaccinated. Did we make, you know, did we make arrangements work around allowing them to go yesterday and today?
We absolutely did. We sent out an email to every, to all of our leadership team, encouraging them to work with their staff, to make sure that anyone who wanted to, who wished to get vaccinated to work with them, to allow them to get vaccinated, and the same again today.
Okay, and if we do decide to go back, the students have a choice of remaining virtual. Have we got the results from that, I guess, survey? How many plan to remain virtual and how many plan to go back?
Um.
I heard you say 400.
That was in the elementary division. About 400 students are remaining virtual.
Okay.
Right now, we have.
How about high school?
At Currituck County High School, we have 177 have chosen to remain virtual. At JP NAP, 77 have chosen to remain virtual. So again, it's almost running to 20% that has, that we saw in the middle school and elementary. Seems around 20% of our students are staying out and choosing the virtual option.
Okay.
It's on.
What did you say, what is lunch schedule like? Are they going to eat in the classroom? Are the carts being loaded around? Or are they going to eat in the classroom?
We're still working through those logistics. Michelle, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, they will probably eat in the classroom, and we, it worked well during exams. I know it wasn't as many students during exams, but we plan on board extra carts and having staff that we all need at that time to come and help us deliver the food. So we, teachers have not had duties so far because we haven't had any students in the buildings, but it's typical to assign lunch anyway, so this will just be lunch delivery and that's it.
And I would say, too, that it's a starting place. These are the, some of the finer logistical pieces. We know we can feed our students. We would work through how that would look. The easiest option right out of the gate that was chosen for exams was the classroom. That doesn't mean that that would be the only option. It may be a mix. Same thing that occurred in the middle schools and elementary. We've worked through it so that sometimes we change it up a week at a time so that it's not the same approach necessarily, but we've had to be very flexible and try to find out what, what works best in each building and what works at. Our comprehensive high school may not work the same at NAP. The same things don't work at Mariah Elementary that work at Jarvisburg in terms of how we feed our students.
And have we put the hand sanitizer dispensers all throughout the high school or any of our schools? Like, you know, because I know if it's there, especially kids, if it's there, they might use it. I just didn't know if it's available. You know, the little ones where you just go through and it puts on your hand? I didn't know if that's an option.
Ms. Arrington, can you speak to the number of dispensers that we have out currently?
I can't speak to the number of dispensers that are out, but I know that there are, every classroom has hand sanitizer, and that there are also key places that have hand sanitizers as well, you know, like the library and main office and places like that.
Thank you.
I'm assuming that is what we've got now for elementary and middle school. Would we make sure our high school teams have these supplies as well?
Absolutely. We have them on hand. I just didn't want to give misinformation in terms of where they are placed throughout the building at this point in time. Since we have not had students in place, again, if the board does choose to move forward, we put forth the date of the 25th, which gives us several weeks to make sure that all of these devices would be in place prior to our students entering the building.
So originally, we were looking at the 19th, and now we're looking at the 25th?
Yes. The reason for that was that a four-day week, logistically with transportation, with an A cohort and a B cohort with our middle schools, it was very difficult to make that happen with the Friday being a virtual day. And so it also allows us to have a very soft start for our high school students, some of which have never entered the building since March. And so it allows us to softly bring our students back the week of the 19th, the week of the 19th, in a very, in a structured yet unstructured manner, to allow us to flexibly re-enter our students.
Now, at the last meeting, the topic was broached about when we do the soft start, maybe bringing back freshmen and seniors to begin with. Are you still thinking about that?
We were looking at bringing back each of the classes, perhaps on a different day for a few hours, perhaps the week of the 19th. We are, we would have to work through our high school leadership teams on those logistics. We want to have them involved, along with our building administrative teams.
And, and if we decide to go back, and, you know, I guess, which is what we've been doing since we've brought elementary back, if, if any thing changed, you know, you could pull the plug, so just send me with a phone call?
That's, that's correct. And again, I applaud our, our families and our staff for being so flexible, as we have made changes rather swiftly, and I think we've become quite nimble at our approach to, to learning and adjusting. We could also, I mean, it, we, we do not know what our governor's going to do. Everybody, so on the, at 2 o'clock, there is a governor's holding a press conference. We wonder, oh, is that going to be education-related? We're, we're always wondering what, what could happen. One of the things we have learned throughout this pandemic is that we can pivot immediately into online learning if we need to. Our tech department, under Ms. Sandy Reynolds and her team, have done an outstanding job. We have kept the online learning in place for our elementary schools on Fridays so that we can make that transition. And currently, of course, high school is there and middle school as well. So if we need to move into an online platform, we can do that, I believe, within 24 to 48 hours.
Okay, I have another question. How difficult a time did the middle school teachers have with the synchronous learning? Because it's not all virtual, and it's not all in-person.
Initially, and Ms. Dought, if you want to chime in on this one as well, initially, like anything else, there was a level of uncomfortableness, and then they found their rhythm. And I applaud our middle school teachers for taking on that challenge. It certainly meant our, our lives. Do you want to speak to that?
I think it's important, they, they were the ones who agreed to keep their kids when we had that discussion. I think that they are working harder than ever, just like every other teacher in our district who wasn't certain how to navigate COVID. Every single teacher in our district's working harder than ever, and I think that hybrid model has its challenges. We have found that more students kind of tend to stay remote when they know they can jump into their classrooms, which does help with numbers and capacity, especially at our larger schools like Mariah Middle and Currituck County High School, if they should choose to come back. But navigating both the synchronous and asynchronous, they've done an amazing job at it, still pulling off as much of the same things you would expect to find in classrooms, like group work and conversation and discussions and, and simulating as much as they possibly can of what it would be like as if every student was still sitting in front of them. I, I'm not going to say it's easy. I know it's not easy. They have worked very hard at the jobs they're doing, but they have done an amazing job.
We're hearing, are there any pointers that you picked up from the middle school teachers that you could pass on to the high school teachers so we don't have to reinvent the wheel here with the synchronous learning?
Absolutely. And as Dr. Lutz mentioned, we spoke with the high school staff. I've talked to Ms. Schuler and Ms. Bowyer and Ms. Fallon over there. We have the ability to go visit what this looks like right here in our backyards. So our high school teachers who would like to see what that looks like would have the availability. Again, we compare Mariah Middle School to the high school because of size comparison and understanding what that could look like in a hybrid setting, so that we can certainly do that very thing to kind of either say, hey, this is what it really is going to look like, or to kind of help pick up pointers and tips and tricks moving forward. But make no mistake, we're not going to say it's going to be easy. None of us anticipated teaching both in a remote and a in-person setting.
All right.
Do we know how many teachers at both high schools would choose to teach virtually? How many would we lose if we did go with in-person learning at the high schools? Do we know?
So we've been accommodating, continue to be accommodating with staff that cannot be in the building due to health concerns. And so I believe that exact, what is our exact number, Virginia, of high school teachers that cannot return?
It's four. At Currituck High School, two are pending. Right now, it's four.
Four and, okay.
And so we have, for example.
One at NAP?
Yes.
Okay.
One there, we have one at Currituck Middle, several in the elementary division as well. So we've been accommodating and will continue to be accommodating and.
So we could bridge that gap with, with other teachers and substitutes and whoever.
We've hired substitutes to, so teachers that can't teach in person, they teach live from, from their homes, and they remote into the classroom, and then we have an adult in the classroom to monitor the students.
Okay.
I have another question. Robert Griffin, high school teacher, what are your thoughts?
What are my thoughts?
Yes.
My thoughts are that when you look at it from what you want your students to be able to do, I really think that hopefully, we're able to get them back in the building sooner rather than, because if you look at the total picture, I think, I think students need that opportunity. There certainly are students, as Olivia has mentioned, who are succeeding well in virtual and, without a doubt, but I think there are many who are not.
Yes, absolutely.
I just think that the sooner they can be in the building, safer, I think that's important.
Great, thank you very much, Robert.
Thank you.
This also, Mr. Griffin brought up a point that in terms of, when there's choice, like Olivia has a choice, I think that does help to increase the accountability factor as well. So if you have a choice, or I'm going to stay online, or I'm going to come in person, if you're choosing to stay online and you don't engage, we certainly, reaching out and saying, hey, we need you to engage. It sounds a little differently than saying, hey, you can't come into the building.
Right.
So I did want to, that is a, I think can be a real positive when you have a school choice to make a decision.
One last question. Will these lessons be taped? So if a student misses it, they can go back and, you know, look at it?
We've been taping our lessons. We've been recording our lessons, and again, I, that's, I think, a very positive byproduct of this entire pandemic, is that if you are sick or you missed that lesson, you can go back to it. And it, just think about how helpful that would be. I'm going to speak for myself. If I was able to watch that math lesson again.
Again, yeah.
And again, or several times, so I could, oh, there's where I missed that, that piece. And so again, I like and I appreciate that this board has supported the recording of lessons, the supporting of turning on cameras and so on and so forth, and we haven't shied away from what's best for our kids and providing that opportunity for multiple ways to learn what we need our kids to learn.
Okay. Any other questions that we have?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
That we go back to school, high school students go back under Plan B, starting January 25th.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'd like to second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Rose, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Thank you. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
I would like to thank the board and for our staff for being patient as we work through our return to school. I think it's been, I'm very happy to be working with this board and working with our community to do the best thing that we can for our kids, and I think we've been slow and deliberate in our thought process, and we're going to continue to approach the return to school that way. And if we need to make a change or we need to pivot, I rest assured that you'll be informed and we'll, we'll do what's best for our students. So I want to thank you, and we need to get to work.
Thank you very much. Before we adjourn the meeting, I just wanted to read a prayer, if everyone could bow their heads. Loving God, your desire is for our wholeness and well-being. We hold in tenderness and prayer the collective suffering of our world at this time. We grieve precious lives lost and vulnerable lives threatened. We ache for ourselves and our neighbors standing before an uncertain future. We pray, may love, not fear, go viral. Inspire our leaders to discern and choose wisely, aligned with the common good. Help us to practice social distancing and reveal to us new and creative ways to come together in spirit and in solidarity. Call us to profound trust in your faithful presence, you, the God who does not abandon. Thank you, and at this time, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.